Good evening. I'd like to call the Harwich Planning Board to order on Thursday, May 30th at 6:30. As many of you know, we have a recording and taping notification that we're required by law to advise you that if the town is going to audio or and video record this meeting, anyone in the audience intending to either audio or video record this open session, you're required to inform the chair. Anybody? You're allowed. It's okay. All right. So, Charlene, what I believe we'd like to do is, as a part of the public hearing, begin with PB 2019-17.
Yes, please. If you would, only because it's going to be continued, so you do need to read it into the record, and then we'll discuss other requests for a continuance.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, PB 2019-17. David Cook as applicant. Valerie Hewitt, representative of the Michael I Sabina Trust as owner, seeks approval of a site plan review special permit with waivers and use special permits for mixed use. The applicant proposes to construct a 2,400 square foot office building with two dwelling units above. Certain pertinent improvements are also included in the proposal and specifically includes a private shared parking easement with a Butter Villa Roma. The property is located at 282 Route 28, MAP 12, parcel G2-1, in the C-H-1 zoning district and is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-9-51-51 point M and We would also like you to note that the applicant has requested a continuance to 611-19. No testimony will be taken at this meeting, and Charlene, I understand you have a suggestion.
Yes. The applicant did request a continuance to the 11th of June. We were hoping to have received some kind of revised plans from them. We have not. My recommendation would be that there actually be a continuance to June 25th, because if something comes in next week, staff will not have the opportunity to review it as would be needed for the 11th. I know there are a couple of Butters here present, and I did say that if it does get continued to the 25th, that we would send postcards out to let folks know that it was continued.
Okay. Thank you, Charlene. So, at this point, we would take a motion to continue.
Yes, please.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
It needs to be to a date and time certain.
Okay.
To June 25th.
No earlier than.
No earlier than 6:30 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bill?
Aye.
Okay, good. Okay, the next item we have.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Charlene?
Yes, sir.
Between now and then, on that matter, can you, only because I received a phone call, there's a representation in here that there's a parking easement.
Private share parking easement.
They have submitted that information, but I don't want to get too.
No, 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 that's fine.
Yeah.
So, you have the information on the easement?
Yep, and.
Okay.
Send people to the planning department if you get phone calls, because we probably can answer their questions and provide them with information.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right. So, next on the agenda, we have a continuance from our last meeting. This is PB 2019-03, Harwich Retail LLC as applicant. Cara Matthew Bombasi, PE Boulder Engineering, representative. Bruce McGregor, trustee. Sunrise Nominee Trust as owner, seeks approval of a site plan review, special permit with waivers, to construct a 7,489 plus or minus square foot retail structure and a use special permit for structures requiring 20 or more parking spaces. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-09-51 and -55. The properties are located at 48 and 52 Route 28.
You don't have to read the whole thing into the record. You've read it so many times. You're just reopening the hearing.
Okay. So, we're reopening, and gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Good evening. For the record, Matt Bombasi with Boulder Engineering. I'm here with Chad Brubaker of Harwich Retail LLC. We've obviously presented a few different times. Just give a quick rundown of kind of process we've gone through so far, and then I'll turn over to Chad, and just you can talk about some of the things we've done this past week to try to work with the town and some of the community.
Sure.
We filed the application back on January 8th, five months ago. We met with the board on February 26th, April 23rd, and May 14th. As part of that review process, we got comments from planning and a couple of the board members regarding the layout of the project, a few minor modifications, in particular regarding the driveway, which we've accommodated.
Mm-hmm.
The review included sending it out to all the town departments. We received comments from the board at health. We've done a Title V inspection and met their requirements for reuse of the existing septic system. We received no comments from fire or conservation. Howie Department had some utility comments, which we were happy to accommodate as far as where we connected and some moratoriums that they had in Depot Road West. The stormwater system has been designed in accordance with the MAS D E P standards. That was reviewed by the town engineering department. He had a couple of comments regarding our connection out to Depot Road West, which we've removed, and he responded in his letter that it was designed in good engineering practice. Traffic, we received some comments from the police department. Deputy Chief Constan, Constanion, I believe now.
Yep.
He had some questions regarding some site distance along Depot Road West, some of the trip generation, in particular, summer traffic. We responded with additional traffic information, some summer peak hour stuff for Route 28. I believe he was here at the April 23rd hearing, which he said that he's gone kind of above and beyond what you might expect, and he's comfortable with the analysis we've done. Also regarding traffic, we've had MAS DOT. We submitted an application for an access permit for our driveway off Route 28. They've reviewed the driveway. They've approved it, or the geometry of it and the location. They had a few minor tweaks to the geometry and the concrete media and things like that, but they've accepted the geometry that we proposed. Regarding Route 28 traffic, I know a comment that's come up a few different times is the nature of Route 28 to back up from that intersection just across the line in Dennis. We did hear some comments from that on MAS DOT as part of that process. MAS DOT, they mentioned to us, and we looked into their records, they do have a project coming up for that intersection that schedules for spring 2024. That's not directly related to our project, that traffic, and we're a low trip generator, but are proposing some geometric improvements and traffic improvements for that intersection for the greater, you know, concern for that area. So, if there were concerns about that, I know DOT has got a project in the works to improve that. Regarding architecture, we had tried to put our best foot forward as far as providing architecture we thought that the town would like with hardy board siding, windows, peaked roofs, things like that. We heard some feedback at the last hearing that perhaps it wasn't exactly what, which it might be looking for, so I know Chad worked with the architect to try to come up with something that maybe the town's approved before, or something that would meet the character, and we have that up on the board there, and Chad can discuss that conversation as well. And then regarding the existing house, that came up with some of the Butters potentially preserving that existing house, which is under demolition delay currently. The house is under disrepair. We have a structural report saying that it's unsuitable. We also have a letter from the fire department saying that it's unsafe. That said, Chad's very willing to work with the town if there's some way we could grant that to the town or otherwise work with the town for preserving either pieces of that building or the building itself, and I know he met with Charlene and some of the community regarding that.
Right. So, to kind of jump in from what Matt has said, and just a quick point of clarification, because I know at every meeting Bruce McGregor, Sunrise Nominee Trust gets right into the record. They are the current owner.
Yep.
I'm a representative of Harwich Retail LLC. We have an agreement to purchase the property, so we are not the current owner, but we are under agreement to purchase the property. So, as Matt had said, based on the feedback from the last meeting, the public comments and some comments from the board, and we took those things back and had some internal discussions, and have also had some discussions with Charlene and a few members of the community, and a couple of things I wanted to outline, two main points of what we, some changes that we made. First being on the architecture. Sure. So, you know, there hasn't been any specific feedback on what, you know, is preferred and what isn't preferred, and I know for the ordinance, there's no specific guidelines that the board can point to, but I just want to express our willingness to say, you know, we're willing to work with everybody, with the board and the community on something that would be.
Do I have the right one, Chad? Just want to be sure.
Yeah, it's a little tough to see. So, what I'll, I'm just going to hold this up here, but one of the points or one of the buildings that we were recommended to was recently approved in Harwich is the Cumberland Farms.
I made it really big.
Okay. So.
Oh, one thing. Chad, you're going to need to use a microphone.
I'll just stay over here now that you have it up.
Okay.
Highlight a couple of the changes. So, we were pointed to the Cumberland Farms on Route 28 as a recently approved retail building in town. Can you put the other one up? So, we used that and compared that to our plan, and we made three changes. We made, or three or four changes. The first being the dormers at the top of the building. The Cumberland Farms has a full dormer. We had shown shed dormers on our previous building, which the previous version is on the right. The new proposed concept is on the left on the screen. So, we changed the dormers. The second change was our building had awnings over the windows. The Cumberland Farms has black shutters, so we changed from the awnings to the shutters. We also had proposed a brick feature around the bottom of the building. The Cumberland Farms does not have that, so we removed that brick feature. The Cumberland Farms also has a, the front is white, but the sides are a gray pewter type color. So, what we did on this plan, you can't see all the side elevations, but we made the front. It's called Arctic White, but the sides are a, forget the exact color name, but it's a gray to do an offset. So, I mean, those are certainly, you know, things that we can do. If there's additional comments or specific points, we're happy to continue to work with everybody to try to come up with exactly, but we were pointing to that building as an example of what was approved in town, so that's led to some of those changes. The second area was the discussion about the house remaining, and what we have proposed and what are willing to do would be to, and this would, we'd need some cooperation with the board and probably take everybody working together, but we could design, our plan, basically, that house is only used for our overflow parking. It shows 10 future parking spaces. That house remains as green space currently. We would be willing to basically carve out a small portion of the lot surrounding the house and donate that either to the town or to a community organization to, you know, rehab, maintain, whatever, you know, would want to be done with it. So, the other aspect of that, and from the beginning, we've always said that if, the other option would be in, you know, dismantling the house, if there's features of that property that people want, or that could be donated to places, we're happy to do that. So, the third point, which I didn't discuss with anyone since the last meeting, but was operations, and, you know, we're certainly happy to work with everyone on delivery schedules, hours operation. I know that there's some nuisance language in the ordinance, but those are certainly things we're willing to work with the board and the community on. And traffic, Matt touched upon the extensive process we've been working through with DOT and permit there. So, you know, again, just to reiterate, you know, our willingness to try to come up with a solution that, you know, works with the board and the community, and if there's, you know, any questions or anything else we can do, we're happy to continue those conversations.
Thank you, Chad, very much. Charlene?
I don't have a lot new to bring to the table, you know, except the fact that I have met with Chad in person, and also we've had several phone calls at this point. They are trying to work with the neighbor and/or the town to figure out something with the house. You know, he explained that. The board did ask that I provide information regarding the limited discretionary referral to the Cape Cod Commission. John Ideman is here from the commission, and if the board has specific questions, he's able to do, you know, respond to that. In your staff report, I did provide the old list, because the regional policy plan hasn't been updated. Unfortunately, the application forms haven't been updated, so what's in your staff report are those items that were under the old. I did this, provide a list of the newer issue areas. Quite honestly, at this point, I, as the planner, would strongly recommend that you allow the applicant to work a little bit further with the Butters, with the town, whomever, to see what can be done about, you know, satisfying, you know, the preservation of the house as well as the design of the building itself. At the last meeting, the design for the Deerfield model, he did show me a picture of that. I was not at all impressed with that and would never recommend that for this town.
Yeah.
I don't think it would fit in at all. There were a lot of features to it that were not, in my opinion, not nice looking at all aesthetically. Not that the board can get into aesthetics, but I think the applicant has heard from the Butters what their concerns have been about design and that kind of thing, so at this time, you know, I would, you know, strongly recommend that you let them do a little more investigating at this point. And if, you know, in two weeks or in four weeks, whenever it comes back, if we still haven't gotten anywhere, then, you know, I think the ball would be certainly back in your court, not that it isn't in your court already, but to make a decision on if you would want to refer it, or if you're good moving forward, or what have you.
Well, you know, Charlene, you pointed out earlier in earlier meetings that, you know, it's important that we proceed with care on this issue, and there are a lot of differing opinions. So, I guess at this point, I would ask the board, if you have any questions, we have Mr. Ideman here, who's graciously agreed to appear, and if anybody has any questions for the Cape Cod Commission and what we have to do or why.
And I believe all John would be doing is speaking to, you know, what the referral process would mean, not whether it should go or not, because that's entirely up to the board.
Yep.
So, through you, Mr. Chair, I would be interested in just hearing a quick overview from you as to what the process would take from, if we went to, if we took the step to refer it, what your process is at the commission.
Or if you want to sit at the podium?
Yeah, right at the podium.
There is a podium.
Matthew, you can just.
Hi again. John Ideman from the Cape Cod Commission. I'm the commission's chief regulatory officer. So, I don't want to rehash too much of what may have been discussed already about the Cape Cod Commission or from the staff report that Charlene put together. I think that was cogent and provided a lot of good information. Based on what I know about the project, it does not require mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission. Cape Cod Commission regulations contain a number of different thresholds for development, and if they are met or exceeded without any discretion of a local permitting board, require referral to the Cape Cod Commission and review is what's called a development or regional impact. This is not one of those projects because the relevant threshold would be 10,000 square feet or more of net new commercial gross floor area. My reading of the plans and my understanding, the project is, project has less square feet than 10,000. There is another avenue to get a project to the Cape Cod Commission for a development or regional impact review, and that's what's called a discretionary referral. Discretionary refers both to the referring body and the receiving body, if you will, the Cape Cod Commission. So, if a board felt that there was a project that had impacts beyond the local community, that is, had regional impacts, you could take a vote, send it to the Cape Cod Commission. The Cape Cod Commission would have to vote to accept the project for development or regional impact review. When you refer a project to the Cape Cod Commission, if you're not the select board, you would also have to copy the select board on the referral, and it's pretty typical for, in that case, where the select board isn't the referring agency, that the select board might make comments on the referral. When a referral like this is made to the Cape Cod Commission, it can be what's called a full or limited discretionary referral, and that should really track the reasons why the board thinks the particular project is of regional impact. Charlene put up this list here of all the different issue areas in the Cape Cod Regional Policy Plan, and these basically correlate with values and interests and goals of regional concern. So, a board could certainly decide that a project was impactful regionally in any of these ways, but it could also be a little more surgical in a referral and decide that the project had regional impact in just one or a few of these different areas. One point, one fine point I want to make is about the existing residence on the site. Typically, one single-family residence is not presumed to create regional impact. The demolition or alteration of such a residence is not presumed to create regional impacts and can't be referred to the Cape Cod Commission unless a few things are true. It's either listed on the national or state registers of historic places, this residence is not, or has been deemed eligible for listing. My understanding, after speaking with other commission staff, is this particular residence, through an area-wide determination, has been deemed eligible for listing on the, either the national or state registers or both. So, wanted to just tease out that idea, but that particular provision in the commission's regulations would not prohibit the demolition of the residence to the Cape Cod Commission or the consideration of that in a referral to the Cape Cod Commission. And that issue area roughly correlates to what you see up there as cultural heritage. That's the issue area under which the Cape Cod Commission reviews potential impacts to archaeological or historic resources. Was that enough of an overview for you?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
It was a great overview.
Okay. Be happy to answer any questions.
So, I'll open it up to the board if anybody has any questions. Craig?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you address the timeframe if an application were made? Are there certain requirements that you're bound by in getting back to the town with your decisions or?
Well, there's a lot packed in there, so let me start with timeframes in general, because there's a couple important points to make here. If a referral is made, if a discretionary referral is made to the Cape Cod Commission, the local review and decision timeframes continue to tick along. It's only when the commission decides to accept a discretionary referral for a development or regional impact review that the local board's timeframes are told, they're stopped during the pendency of commission review. In terms of when does the Cape Cod Commission, if it accepts review as a DRI, you know, when does it get through its review of a project, and when does the project get back locally? Well, that's a big if, because in order for the project to get back to local permitting, the Cape Cod Commission would have to both review and approve a project. And basically, by statute, it has approximately seven months total to do so. That period can be extended, but basically it approximates to seven months as a matter of right.
Seven months from when the commission accepts.
Correct.
The application.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be opposed, all due respect, John, and go back a long way.
That's okay. It's not personal.
I'd be opposed to referring it. I think it's, I mean, I understand that the neighbors are unhappy, but the thing is zones as it is, and I just think we're extending when we don't have to extend. We should make the appropriate restrictions that we have within our own jurisdiction and authority and issue a decision. With all due respect, I just don't think this is a case that should be referred.
So, I guess I look at it slightly different than Joe does. I guess I haven't made up my mind yet. So, you know, I can see both sides of it. I do, frankly, like Charlene's idea of letting the applicants, giving them a little more time to try and work out the details.
Open agreement on that.
And if they have the opportunity and are able to work out some details, then I think it might not be fruitful to refer it to the Cape Cod Commission, but I guess I personally haven't ruled it out yet.
Okay. That's good. David?
My comment does not relate to referring it to the commission. Would you like to handle that later or stay with the commission comments first?
But whatever you'd like. I mean, it's okay to comment.
I want to speak to the architecture. Really appreciate your attempts to improve the architectural character of the building by going back to the Cumberland gas station. Now, we have a proposed retail that looks like a gas station. Kind of joking there, but I think there are far better examples within Harwich and Harwich Port from an architectural standpoint that would bring the character of this building not into the residential frame, but into a far more pleasing commercial frame. Couple of examples are the new harbor master and office at Sacquet Tucket. There's a little building right just east of the Cumberland gas station that is a similar character. Perhaps if it's not within the capabilities of the architect that you have now, maybe you could seek the services of an architect that can help with them with the design, the character. So, it brings the building into a little more character with the neighborhood, also a little more articulation in the facades rather than just a box, change the shape of the building a little bit, not to the point of making it look artificially residential. And I think a great deal that can be done here to improve the character and looks of the building.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, a question.
Sir?
If an application is made, limited discretionary application is made for a couple of those situations, does the Cape Cod Commission come up with a decision? Are we, if we're referring it, is it us providing a question to you, or we're saying we would like, I'm just going to pick one, we would like you to consider open space as one of the limited discretionary? And then, once your decision-making process is complete, a month or seven months, whatever it is, and the decision that you come back to the planning board or the selectman, if appropriate, as you described, is that, are we then bound by what you come back with, or do we still, can we pick or can we decide to accept your recommendation or decision or not?
Yeah. A referral to the Cape Cod Commission creates an independent and parallel line of jurisdiction. So, the commission's, the commission would issue a decision after its review, and it would be entirely independent of the town, and in fact, in one sense, the town's decision would be bound to the commission's decision. The town's decision could not be less restrictive than the Cape Cod Commission's decision. So, it's not just a matter of a recommendation.
Okay.
It's a completely independent level of jurisdiction, and that all begins with the board's position, not just that the board doesn't want to issue the, you know, doesn't want to issue a difficult decision, and, but that the board finds that this project is of regional significance. That is, it has impacts beyond the Town of Harwich. That's what, that's kind of the predicate finding that this board would have to make to support a referral to the Cape Cod Commission. And in fact, if it is referred to the Cape Cod Commission, the town would be making that case at a hearing before the Cape Cod Commission. That's the hearing at which the Cape Cod Commission would decide whether it would accept the project for DRI review.
And then, once the decision is made and comes back to the board, the board is bound by that decision, if I understood your explanation correctly?
To the extent that there are conditions that this board might also make, this board could not be less restrictive than the Cape Cod Commission's conditions or other finding in the particular decision.
Yeah. Thank you, John. Thank you.
But, John, if we refer it, we're basically turning over the jurisdiction, aren't we?
There's still town jurisdiction under the special permit jurisdiction, but you're essentially creating a different and independent jurisdiction by, you're creating a regional jurisdiction over the project.
By turning it over, by referring.
By sending it to the Cape Cod Commission. Yes.
David?
Let me understand if it is, if the town makes an application for discretionary referral, does the Cape Cod Commission decide whether or not it wants to accept it or not?
That's correct.
So, even if we make the referral, you may decide, gee, you don't make the case?
The commission board may decide not to accept it. Yeah.
Mary?
And it's predicated on this board actually making the findings that we believe this project has regional impact, that is, it's regional, not just to Harwich, but regional to the area.
Yeah. There's no magical. Yeah, there's no magical legal words that need to be made, but basically, the board's position would be that this is a project of regional significance, at least in the issue areas under which the board would want to refer it. That's correct.
And I don't know if I ask a question to you, and you ask John, or if I can ask him directly, but I just wanted to get some clarification on the demolition of the house, because technically that was handled through the historical commission, and we have a permit currently. If, if we're talking about a seven-month delay in this process, that one year would expire, and the seller could technically take the house down. Does that referral have any impact on the, on the demo permit for the project?
John?
It does, and it's a, it's a bit of a thorny issue. So, even if the commission accepted the project for development or regional impact review, that would not toll the running of the demolition delay period. It would continue running. However, when the commission accepts review of a project, no local permit can issue on the project. So, essentially, even though the delay period would continue running, no demolition permit could issue to take down that building.
David?
Charlene, you may know the answer to this.
Uh huh.
If an application is made for the, the state or national register for this building, can anyone make such an application? Could the town make it? Could the neighbors make it, or would it have to be the owner?
Anybody to make an application for registration?
Thank you.
Yep.
Can the, can the Cape Cod Commission overturn the existing demo permit?
Well, my understanding is there's not an existing demolition permit.
Be approved?
There's an existing notice of intent to demolish, which the, the board, local board, took as an opportunity to impose a demolition delay.
Right. Could the Cape Cod Commission overrule that notice of intent?
No, that's why I'm saying the, the demolition period would continue to run even if the commission accepted the project for review. However, a demolition permit could not issue, because essentially, when the commission takes review of a project, it enjoins the issuance of local permits unless and until the commission both reviews and approves a project.
Okay, John? Okay, at this point...
I just wanted to make one point.
Sure.
And I'm glad that Mr. Harris brought up the comments he did, but I would remind the board that under site plan review?
Mm-hmm.
You have no jurisdiction over the aesthetics, but I think you've provided some good examples of other architectural, you know, things out there that, that they can look towards.
And I think we're very willing to work.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's been, it's been handled very well. Mary, go ahead, please.
So, that being said, given Charlene's suggestion for a, a continuance, to give you folks more time to kind of work through with, hopefully, some of the neighbors and be able to come with, to come up with something that people might be more apt to be in favor of, is the end of June a timeframe that, so I think we have a meeting on the 25th?
25th.
Yep.
So, would the 25th be a, a meeting that you folks think you'd have enough time to, to kind of do some of that?
I think we can move quickly with our architects, and, you know, I would, I would request the 11th, you know, the next, the next hearing that I think we would be prepared to come back.
Keeping in mind, I would need everything by Monday. That's a very quick turnaround, only because the meetings, because we got pushed to Thursday this week, our meetings are closer together.
Ten days apart, so.
I don't know if the board would be willing or able to hold a special meeting before the 25th. I, I'm just kind of throwing that out there. One of my concerns is that the 25th is our chairman's last meeting, and he is an integral part of the decision-making process, because he, the only five that are eligible to vote are David, Mary, Joe, Craig in the chair, so.
Yeah.
If it goes beyond that date?
No.
Then, we need to start from scratch. They'd need to withdraw, make a reapplication.
Okay.
So, then, any chance you're going to be able to make an 11, if, if Charlene needs? I mean...
What are we asking from you? Just some, some new plans as to the architecture of the building?
The architecture, and, you know, I think the two things we had proposed earlier was the architecture, which, you know, I guess, could we have a plan back by Monday? Probably, but are we going to have time to get any feedback on it from anybody?
No.
That's one of my concerns.
Yeah, there'd be no input from the...
Is it worth coming in on the 11th just to present a concept that could be finalized for the 25th?
It's no problem with that.
That's not a bad idea.
The other, the other piece was the, you know, the, the house, if we wanted to try to come up with a solution to save the house, so.
What?
What do you mean, as to whether or not to tear it down?
Can I, can you pull up that? This is just a very preliminary concept.
Do you want the division?
Yeah, if you have it.
Yep.
So, what we had proposed, this is all, we had proposed all one lot, and this is very preliminary, it would need some, you know, there'd be some discussions on, on zoning, but we had proposed carving out Lot 2, and donating that lot, along with the house and everything on it, to, you know, to the town or a community organization, you know. We'd, we'd have to figure out how that process would work.
And not, and not tear the house down?
And not tear the house down. Now, we would need, we would need a waiver from the planning board for those 10 overflow parking spaces that we proposed for that area.
Yeah.
You know, aside from that, there are some, there are some impacts possibly with the ZBA, with setbacks and, and lot, you know, minimum lot areas and things like that, that we would need, you know, we would need some, some time to work through that. Or, you know, our thought was, as a, since we aren't the current owner, as a condition of our approval, or, you know, of us closing on it, that we would work through that process.
Yep.
You know, as we, as we move forward.
Joe?
You don't own that lot now where that house is? You do, or you do not?
We, we do not. We have an agreement to purchase the entire, that entire property.
Including where the house is?
Including the house.
That's, that's what I understood, too.
And, and in your current proposal, just so I understand, your current proposal is to tear the house down, and essentially, for lack of a better description, open up that, that...
Corner would be green space, would be all, would be all grass and...
Which in terms of traffic and things like that, I think, makes sense.
Right, from our, from our standpoint, you know, that works better for us, but based on the, on the feedback and the concern about the house coming down, you know, a proposal such as that would be a way to, to save the house, and, you know, again, it's, it was a, it was a concept and a, and a proposal that, you know, that worked better for the community, and, and, you know, we'd be willing, willing to work with everybody on that.
Okay. Are there any further comments from the board? Any more questions, concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I don't want to take us down a rat hole, but if, if this were to come to pass, an agreement were reached between yourselves or the owner and somebody, somebody, B-O-D-Y, not, and they propose to rehab and save the house and so forth, I guess this is a, a question for the chairman or for Charlene, would the planning board then become involved in a whole separate set of plan reviews?
No.
No?
No.
So, they, the, the party that, if they were to come to an agreement, and the party that said, "We want to rehab this house," and then they just let it sit there and continue to fall apart, that's fine, there's no recourse?
Concerned.
Or, I mean, what, how is that controlled? What ends up happening with that?
The, the structure, and it goes with the structure?
Yep.
Not with the owner, has approval, has a demo delay?
Right.
Which expires, I think, sometime in September.
September.
If this is carved off, and there's an agreement that it goes to entity A, which is a nonprofit, and entity A either can't fix it, or can't move it, or what have you, it's up to entity A, because chances are, I mean, the building at this point is condemned. It would be their responsibility to, to remove that house if it is a nuisance, and if not, then the town can go in and then...
Do it, send them a bill.
You know, make the entity pay for it, after the town takes it down, so.
And who dictates the timeframe for entity A to decide what they're going to do and do it?
Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen?
It'd be the Board of Selectmen, wouldn't it?
Well, assuming it's the town who gets it, I, I don't know as the town is interested in obtaining this property or this house. We have other buildings in town that we're struggling with on how to preserve or do something with them, so I don't know as they would be interested in another one. If there's another entity out there that is interested in it, whether they want to, you know, try and rehab it where it is, whether they want to take it down, you know, board by board and number them, and rebuild it somewhere else, whether they want to take, as, as was described, certain features, and, you know, put them in another location of a house, I mean, those are the kind of things that, yeah. They would need, if, if the Lot 2 was carved off, and assuming they got the approvals from the zoning board of appeals, because this would need a number of different types of relief in the form of variances, the applicant would need to have a complete waiver on the number of parking spaces. What is in the proposal right now is to only do the 30 parking spaces with a reserve area shown, essentially within where Lot 2 is shown on this plan, you know, that if they, it's deemed that they need additional parking spaces in the future, they would have that ability to do so. This proposal would take that ability away.
Okay. All right.
I could point out, just on, on that one issue, there is the opportunity for us to show other Green Bank spaces. I'm not sure we would get the additional 10 with all the interior landscape requirements, but...
Yeah, I doubt it, and with the lot coverage requirements, and, yeah, it, it would be very difficult, I think.
Okay, Mary?
I appreciate the, the attempt with, you know, the, the proposal to potentially carve out, out Lot 2. The skeptic in me says that it only works if you have somebody with, that has the money that's going to come forward and, and do it. So, it takes a very specific, you know, person to be able to do that, or else, you know, we're still in the same situation that we're in now with that home in disrepair. So, you know, it, it may work if the neighbors and the, and have the right, have the right person, with the right means, you know, it would be great if it could happen. I'm just, I have to be skeptical, skeptical that that's a, that that's going to happen. I just, you know, for obvious reasons, but...
Well, one of the things you may make, want to make a note of, is, am I correct? Isn't Habitat got a bunch of lots across the street that they've got permission to build on?
It's further down the street.
It's at, it's at 93 and 97, Route 28, so it's farther east.
I mean, maybe they put it on a roll, and roll it down the street.
I don't think Habitat's going to be interested in this house.
Well, I don't know. I served on that board for 15 years.
I just met with them this morning.
Although they're just, they're just losing their directors, so that's a problem. Whatever, I just questioned. I knew they were there someplace, I wasn't sure exactly.
Okay. Any more questions from the board, any comments?
Not a question, but I, I would also like to echo what Mary said, that I, I think it shows a, a nice approach by you of willingness to talk with us and the folks that are concerned to try to come to some resolution that hopefully makes everyone happy, maybe not at the same level, but, so, thank you.
That's great, Greg, that's...
Move to...
Let's, let's, there are a lot of people here. Any, anybody, yeah, anybody from the audience that would care to comment?
I'm going to sit down. I will say that if you'd like me to come back, just let Charlene know, and, no, I'm, I'm not going to leave, but if you'd like me to come to a subsequent meeting, just let Charlene know, and I'd be happy to return, so.
John, thank you so much for coming.
Mr. Chairman, I would really recommend that if it's something that has already been said, that, you know, if somebody has something new, or questions of John and the process and that kind of thing, but...
Yeah, we need to move along, so...
And if you can write your name down, just so, although I know you, Sally, but...
Okay. Good evening, it's Sally Rubano from West Harwich. Good evening to all our visitors, and to our member from the Cape Cod Commission, I have a question, please, because on that prior screen, there were the lists of things, which we could refer to you based on cultural, I think there was also water resources, transportation. My question to you would be, so we're talking about an individual referral, but what we have in this area that we've been working on for five years are actually 23 houses on, that were approved to be within a national registered district. So, that's a pretty, that's a pretty large area. There also is the water resource, which is the Herring River watershed, which now has an aqua culture plant on it. And as far as the transportation, we've been working with MassDOT, and they have proposed making this kind of a village walking way, the 28, the intersection at 28 and Depot, she wanted to highlight so that people could bicycle and walk and see the, the various homes. So, I wondered what the difference might be if a referral for DCPC might be in order.
That, that's something totally different.
A district of critical planning concern or DCPC, which Harwichians know through the Pons District in, in Harwich, is a, is a completely different creature of statute under the Cape Cod Commission Act. Based on the project we're talking about, a DCPC would be inappropriate. It's really kind of a planning designation in the first instance, a large planning designation.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you, Sally. Thank you. Sir?
Robert Carney, 5 Mansion Street, West Harwich. I'd like to know, the engineer was speaking, that he talked to someone about the transportation and the, and the roadway, safe roadways. I live in Mansion Street.
I'm sorry, I missed your name, sir, I'm sorry.
Robert Carney, C-A-R-N-E-Y, 5 Mansion Street. In the summertime, when my grandkids are here every weekend, that road is like a highway, because everyone taking a shortcut to avoid the traffic at the, at Harwich and Dennisport. So, I can't understand how he said the transportation side of it was worked out. Could you explain that to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So, we've, the traffic's been reviewed by a few different entities, one being the Harwich Police Department, the other being Mass DOT. We had to file an application with Mass DOT for a driveway permit as part of that. That review process, they send it to a number of different departments, they have Mass DOT, they look at driveway orientation, site distance, traffic generation, and the like, so we have approval from them for the construction of the driveway.
And you don't think you're going to upset the traffic in my neighborhood?
Uh, no, we don't think there'll be an appreciable impact.
You don't think you'll, say that again?
There won't be an appreciable impact, no.
There won't be, huh? Could I ask you a question? Do you know where Mansion Street is?
I assume up Depot Road West.
Do you know where Mansion Street is?
It's got to go through you, they're the one-on-one.
So...
Well, I'm just saying, he said he had everyone...
Excuse me, excuse me, just as a matter of protocol, right, if you want to ask questions, it's got to come through me.
Okay, I thought, sorry, I didn't know that. Go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm running the meeting, right, not you.
Try.
So, my, my, look, I want you to make your point, and I'm going to give you a couple of minutes to make your point, and then we'll have the next person come up, okay, Mr. Carney?
My, my issue is the traffic. On the street before Depot Street West?
Yep.
It's a shortcut as it is now, because of all the summer traffic.
Yep.
People fly down that road. Someone's going to get hurt, and, and I don't, just don't believe that's the place for that building.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Lou Pariscand, and I am a lifetime resident of Harwich.
Can you write your name down, just so you don't mess up your spell?
Yes, in fact, two of my, two of our five children were born in that building. I commuted and squeezed the three-year graduate program at Going Conroe into four years, commuted every day from that building. Eight o'clock classes, three days out of the five. My question is, my understanding is they're looking for a special permit use, and that's why they're before the planning board?
Special?
The use does not require... The use does not require a special permit. It's, under our local bylaw, any new commercial site requires a site plan special permit. So, the use is allowable by right under the Harwich zoning, but the site, because it's an unimproved site, triggers the need for a site plan approval special permit.
And so, that is still at the discretion of the local board? Is that at the discretion of the local board?
To a certain point. I did read this at a previous meeting. Under the site, and I'm gonna paraphrase this, under site plan review, the board cannot deny, but they can impose reasonable conditions. Under Massachusetts general law, site plan review is not governed. Only use special permits are governed. So, there is no provision under Massachusetts general law for site plan review. It's something that most communities have adopted and have tried to figure out how best to use the process. But it does, it's not a use special permit, so it is very difficult unless it completely does not meet the requirements of zoning or it's a use that's not allowable under zoning. The board really cannot deny a site plan special permit, but they can impose reasonable conditions.
And so, Chairman?
Sir?
I guess my question would be then, if still you are the representatives of the residents of Harwich and I understand your responsibility to businesses that want to come into our town, that I wonder, have you really interviewed West Harwich? Because this is really going to affect the character of West Harwich, no matter what kind of building we put in there. And I'm not anti-growth or business in our town, but we have to be realistic to say. And I know that it was mentioned that this process has been going on since January. That's five months. Five months is really not a long time to deliberate over a decision that is going to, for many years, affect the character of West Harwich. And so, I think that is the question, not so much that we're, that I would be opposed to a business, but I just wonder how much of our wonderful culture of West Harwich, Massachusetts, on Cape Cod, how is that gonna be impacted by having a Dollar General store? Is it unreasonable for us to ask how that's gonna change our neighborhood? And so, I don't think it's unreasonable to go to the June 25 date. I don't think it's unreasonable for this business concern to have to reapply. That's just my opinion, for that reason.
Allow me, if you will, to make a couple of points. I think earlier, first of all, the one point I want you to understand is what this group in front of us is asking for is approval of a site plan review special permit with waivers, right? We've been discussing this, as you stated, since January, right? I think we've been proceeding as, with a lot of care, as have they, and a lot of sensitivity to our fellow citizens that live in West Harwich. So, I don't think anybody here is suggesting that we speed this process up, okay? So, if that's a concern, right? I really doubt we're gonna take a vote on this tonight, okay? So...
So, would it be unreasonable to the board if in fact there had to be a reapplication of the project?
Go ahead, Charlie.
The only reason there may be a reapplication is if this goes beyond, oh, excuse me, beyond June 25.
And is there any reason for the board desiring not to see that happen? Is there a reason, a compelling reason?
I, you know, at this point, I'm not sure that there's a compelling reason, but what I would suggest is that you let someone else speak. You've had your, you've made your point and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Darian Davis. I live in West Harwich. I'm a little late to the game because though you've been working on this apparently since January, it's only come to my attention in the past three or four weeks of the potential of what's actually gonna go in this area. Why would you put a Dollar General or a Dollar Store within a quarter of a mile of each other? I don't understand that at all.
We don't know what the use is.
You know, it's...
But isn't that what these two gentlemen are proposing? If I'm missing it, please tell me.
I respectfully, it's not, you know, they don't have to disclose by law what they're going to put into this, into this structure.
Well, okay.
You believe everything you read in the Chronicle?
I believe what you're telling me.
I, well, I'm not sure everybody would agree.
Why don't they take over the old Bennys? Why don't they take over the old Bennys that's vacant for three years?
Okay. As you stated when you stepped to the podium.
Yes, sir.
You're late to the game.
Yes, I am.
Okay. I really appreciate you speaking up. I think you're saying a lot of the same things that others have said. If you have something different to say, please make your point and we'll have the next person come up.
I don't mean to be rude, but are you tired of listening to us?
No, I'm not tired. I mean, I think, I think all of us are concerned and I think we're proceeding with care and caution.
Okay. What was I gonna say?
I mean, we all live here too, right?
Oh, I know, but I live in West Harwich.
I live in East Harwich.
I live in West Harwich.
Put the Dollar Store over there or whatever it's gonna be. And I don't mean to be sarcastic. I really don't. But why can't someone rehab the house and make it housing? Why can't the tech school go in there and learn their trade and fix up the house and keep it?
These are, look, these are all great ideas.
Okay, what can we do with it?
You know, let's stop talking and start doing.
What can I do to stop this commercial property going forward?
Whatever you'd like.
I didn't think it was that funny.
Want to buy the house? I'm sure they'd sell it.
No, mine's just as old, thank you. So, is there anything we as the public can do at this point besides complain and get nowhere?
The board is obligated to make a decision on this with whatever way it is. Whatever decision they make has to be a lawful decision. The zoning bylaw says they have to approve a site plan application. They can impose reasonable conditions. I do not see at this point a provision whereby they can deny this application. I just, I do not see it. If the use was a use special permit, as was brought up by the other gentleman, then that would be very different.
Okay.
The board could deny a use special permit if they felt it didn't meet the criteria. But under the Harwich zoning bylaw, they are really governed by what they have to, can and cannot do.
So, any, any commercial item could go there? Could be another liquor store or...
They have requested, through you, Mr. Chairman, I beg your pardon. They have requested site plan approval for a retail space.
Okay.
If something else wants to go in there that we deem, wait a minute, that's not really retail, it falls under another use and does require a use special permit, then they need to come back. They had, at a very late part of the stage, asked or showed an area of outside storage. That requires a use special permit. So, they know they have to come back to this board for a request to do outdoor storage. This board, because that's a use special permit, could say to them at that point, no, there will be no outdoor storage or it's only gonna be very limited to what you can do for outdoor storage.
Okay.
So, at this point, all that really can be done is reasonable conditions. Now, if I can do a little bit more on this. I have been in conversations with several folks who live in the area who want to create a historic district there, which may be more than just a national registered historic district, which quite frankly, at the local level, does not have a lot of teeth. The historic district in Harwich Center has a local review and the historic commission gets to say how something can and cannot be built and designed. Right now, we don't have that in Harwich, in West Harwich, but that's something that we would be looking at. And I've already said I'm more than happy to work with folks in that area to work on that. Also, looking at some innovative and creative zoning that might help to preserve some of these older homes and at the same time, create some, not knocking these gentlemen, a little bit more creative commercial development, mixing in residential use. So, kind of thinking outside the box. Right now, for lack of a better word, we have stripped development, the way our zoning is right now. And until that changes, there's really not a lot that can happen. That's just the reality of it. I know it's not great in some people's minds, but that's the law. That's what the board has to abide by, what the town has to abide by. I know y'all don't like hearing that from me and I'll probably be on the old timers page saying, "She's a wackadoodle" or whatever, but that's the stark reality of it. But I'm also more than happy, you know, to work with folks. But in this case, you know, unless the board does decide at some point that they do want to refer it and justifying that it is a regional impact, you know, to the Cape Cod Commission as a limited discretionary referral and that decision, I'm pretty sure it's not gonna happen tonight because I think they want to allow the applicant to work some more to see what they can come up with, with the neighbors, with the town, although I don't think the town wants this building. But that's not for me to say. That's for the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen. So, you know, they're willing to work. You know, I'm willing to help them meet with you all if I'm available, if they want me to, you know, whatever I can do to assist in this process. But the board's hands are really tied at, because of the zoning, the way it is. We have 1970s zoning in this area. And I couldn't agree with you more that it needs to be changed. But until it is changed, there's not, there's not a lot this board can do.
Okay. My, I only had one other comment and it was to the gentleman on the left. And like I said, I...
On the left?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Like I said, I am late to the party. But sometimes you were speaking so fast and so technically, I had no idea what you were talking about. And it's hard too because you're speaking, you're speaking just to them and I'm like, you know, I just really couldn't understand you and I'm not that technical anyway.
So...
I do a staff report for just about every applicant. I didn't do one for the Cook one because that got continued. But I do a very detailed staff report that anybody is more than happy to get a copy from me. My cards are out front on the, on the little, yeah.
Table.
Table thing out there. My name is Charlene. I'm the town planner. Grab my card, send me an email. I'm happy to send you whatever I have for information.
Okay, that'd be terrific. Thank you very much.
You know, first of all.
Yes, sir.
Before you go, I really want you to know that we do appreciate you speaking up and we have tried very hard, and this isn't a perfect board, but we've tried very hard to listen to a lot of different opinions over a fairly, you know, you may think five months is not that long. Well, it is when you're getting input almost daily on an, on an issue that is highly sensitive, right? And it's not sensitive just to you in, in West Harwich. I mean, we've had issues in other parts of Harwich that have been equally sensitive and it's important that we listen to one another. It's important that we respect what everybody else has to say. And I would like you to understand that we've tried very, very hard on this board to listen and proceed carefully. And I can tell you that I'm sure this board is gonna continue to do the same.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, yeah. I think what we're going to, I think, does anybody have anything different to say? I've heard from you quite a bit, Ms. Williams, but...
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Williams. My question is, my property is across the street.
Yes, you made that clear last meeting.
Right. Am I in a butter?
I believe you are, yeah.
Nobody has asked me about my input into this project. It's been five months and we here have said, no one has come to meet with us or asked us for their input. No one.
Okay. I'm gonna defer to Mary Maslowsky.
So, unfortunately, that's not the way it works when you're in a butter. There's a legal requirement for the applicants to send a butter's notices out to people within the designated area and then it's up to you to do what you're doing, to come and comment at a public hearing. But there's no real legal obligation for the applicants to reach out to you directly and say, you know, what would you like to see us do? That's simply just not how it works.
But they say they're working with us.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams, podium, please.
Who are the us that these people are working with?
So, so due respect, the applicants clearly met with some people in the neighborhood and I have no idea who they were. I have no idea who they were, but they've made that representation. So, that doesn't mean it has to be you because you were across the street, unfortunately.
So, may I suggest that, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna probably continue this, but would you, would you mind talking with Mr. Bombasi when you have time or...
Anytime.
Matthew?
If I might.
Yes.
The folks that have met actually reached out to them.
Yep.
So, you know, that's how, that's how they moved forward to, to meet with, to meet with Chad.
That's my only question is, where are the meetings and how can we be involved?
You need to reach out.
And just, just to clarify, you know, we've been at the meetings and I've taken very detailed, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to talk to you but also speaking to the microphone, taken very detailed notes of the comments that have been made. That's what led to a lot of the changes that were made since the last meeting. You know, that's something we'll probably have to plan for before the next hearing is a way to, you know, obviously, we want to work with the community, but members of the community have different opinions and to try to keep every single person happy. So, we just have to figure out the best way to coordinate, you know. You know, with that, with the House proposal, for example, I mean, there's a lot of work in who, you know, we'd be, you know, we're looking to donate that, you know, we're not asking for a bidding process with that house. So, I mean, what's the proper organization, you know, what's the right group? What's the right organization? You know, so we'll certainly do that.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
My name's David Gould. I live in West Harwich on Bell's Neck. Again, late to the party.
Was it Gould?
Gould, G-O-U-L-D. I guess this is to, is it Maslowsky? How, how far do you have to be from the butter to be notified, is my question? Being very naive with this because I'm literally less than a quarter mile.
You're not in a butter.
Okay, that, I mean, no, that's fine and that's why it wasn't notified then, so...
Anybody directly abutting the property and across the street and anybody within 300 feet.
Okay.
So, if it's a big, if the across the street property is a really big property, then only the across the street is gonna get notified.
Fair enough, very naive, not sure about it.
No, no, it's a valid, good question.
Good question.
Okay. And you guys, I know you have, you have a hard, hard deal ahead of you here, but, and please just keep the brakes on a little bit and I think everybody can be happy down the road, but if you proceed with caution the way you have been, I think it'd be a good thing.
I can assure you, we'll proceed with caution, Mr. Gould.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Okay. I think at this point... Okay, who was first, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Patty Tork. I live in West Harwich. I just wanted to make sure that all of you on the board, as well as the people here, understand that a tenth of a mile away from the property that may be demolished or may... understand that a tenth of a mile away from the property that may be demolished, or may not be, sits a building that's the fourth building in the town on the National Register of Historic Places and also the State Register. So, whether that helps in your determination to move this to the Cape Cod Commission based on cultural heritage and the other Captain's Rose houses that have been deemed eligible, or whether it helps you, us, you to take the generous offer that these people have made to try to keep the building. I think that there's a lot of preservation money at the state level that could be gathered. We don't need a millionaire, I don't think, to buy the building. We may be able to work at something. But I just wanted you to, the people here, to know that that building, the Chase Library, sits very close to this site. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you so much, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Karen Horn, I live on Smith Street, which is just behind the Baptist Church, which is next door to this property. I have a couple of questions. One, I, I just, I guess my first comment would be to reiterate, this is an area of historic significance. We've got the, the schoolhouse just behind this building. So, I really, I believe that this does fit at least one of the areas of, of issue that qualifies it to go to the Cape Cod Commission for consideration. If none else, the cultural heritage. And I just would plead with you to consider that the cultural heritage of West Harwich is not 10 years old, or 20 years old, or even 100 years, it's very old. It's, it's the history of our, of our town. So, this is going to dramatically change the, the appearance of this culturally rich area. When you drive down Route 28, this is the beginning of this town. Like it or not, we're not East Harwich, we're not Harwich Center, we are the entrance to our town. And I'm just not convinced that whether it's a Dollar General, and, excuse me, but that's what I've read, so I'm going by that. Whether it's a Dollar General or some other retail, that will be the beginning of Harwich in, in the minds of the people who live there and the people who visit. My other point is, now I have forgotten it. Oh, I know. As far as traffic, I know that an official traffic study was done, but I just wonder, those of you on the board, have any of you actually, and I don't mean this sarcastically, I really and truly am questioning, have you witnessed the backup of traffic on a, on any summer day from Dennis Port backed up to Mansion Street and beyond? Traffic is completely stopped, people have sit there two and three go-arounds of the light, and the entrance to this proposal, this proposed property, is right in the midst of that. I don't understand how there's no impact. And to the gentleman that talked about traffic on Mansion Street, to get to Mansion Street, they first come down Smith Street. So, our street in the summer becomes a major roadway, and if this, this building is approved, this, this permit, that's going to increase. There's going to be much more traffic in a very, very residential area that's already a cut-through. So, there's a lot of impacts, I see two or three of them. And for that reason, I'm, I'm really, I'm imploring you to consider moving this along to the Cape Cod Commission.
Thank you. I'll, I'll take one more, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Anne Marie Russell, West Harwich. I live on the corner of Smith Street and Bell's Neck Road. We've been there for 50 years. Our house is over 200 years old, and the fellow who built it is buried out on Bell's Neck Road. I just think West Harwich is not the place for a chain store. I don't think Harwich is a place for a chain store. Whether it's West Harwich, East Harwich, other than pharmacies and supermarkets, I don't think we have anything of this size to impact the town like this. I know the horse is out of the barn. Route 28 is zoned commercial. However, the horse can be out of the barn, we don't have to tease the horse down the road. Because what's going to happen, we're not going to have people maybe that are going to come in and do what they did to Mildred Gerard's house, and spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they have turned it into a beautiful job. What's going to happen when Bishop's Terrace gets to the point? Are we going to put another chain store there? I think you have to think of the town, not just of West Harwich and those of us who live there. What do we want our town to be? And I think the gentleman, I don't know you, but the gentleman who suggested the architectural changes to the, to the plans, I mean, you can do a lot with architectural plans. I also think the idea of donating the house to a nonprofit, I mean, really, is a nonprofit going to have the hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring that house up to speed? I mean, when we bought in 1968, you wouldn't, you couldn't put up a garage for what we paid for our house. And how, West Harwich was a small, little village. Perkins Store was there, and the Perkinses lived in that house that you're talking about. Bill and Toby Perkins lived there, and now Bill Perkins is back in town, and I think he cringes every time he drives by that house. It's just, I mean, it's a shame. It's a shame that the town will let this happen. And it's also a shame that nothing has been done to change the zoning since 1970. I think, I think we deserve better, and I think you folks can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Move to continue to June 20?
They want to be eleven.
Oh, 11th, so they can give a progress report.
Do you have a pen?
11th?
Yep.
Thank you.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you, thank you all very much.
Mr. Chairman, you may want to let people know that we have more to do, so they can be quiet and move along. Thanks, John.
The next item. Folks, folks. If you'd like to discuss, please go outside, we'd like to continue our business.
This is on the agenda when they start, and it's on the agenda when they retire five years later.
It could be.
Okay, the next item to be discussed is a continuance. PB dash, or PB 2019-15, Deerfield Nominee Trust, William Marsh seeks approval of site plan review, special permit with waivers for new construction. We've read this all into the record before, so.
Charlene, put it up on the screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll put it up.
Charlene, you can do something to help us out?
I'm trying, I'm trying. How's that? I've been sitting in this chair too long, I can't move.
No, we don't need that.
Yep.
Good evening, Bill Riley, on behalf of Eastwood Companies, Susan Ledoux and Bill Marsh.
Hi, Susan. Hi, Bill.
So, we're here to talk about Deerfield Road. We, we have a proposal before you for site plan. Charlene has filed her report with you, in which she disagrees with us sharply on several issues. We have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yep.
And so, I was able to convince Charlene that even though she doesn't agree with what we want to propose, it was worthwhile coming to speak with you about our proposals, get your opinion, so that when we go to the zoning board and come back to you later for a final approval, that we would understand your concerns, to the extent they might be somewhat different than Charlene's, we hope. Not that we don't love Charlene, of course, but, so-
I've been here way too long.
Anyway, so we'd like to, so we'd like to talk about her, her concerns and get your response, your, your feelings about those concerns. So, the, do you want to do your report, then we'll-
Whatever the pleasure.
Charlotte, please.
Do I want to make a presentation?
Susan will make a presentation, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you make your presentation, then I'll do.
Okay.
Go ahead, Susan.
Hi, Susan Ledoux. We're here tonight, we're proposing a 58, 45 square foot industrial metal building, and it's proposed to accommodate an industrial utility and other uses, and the building height and number of stories will be conforming. 11 parking spaces, including one accessible space, are proposed, where six spaces are required for the proposed use of light industry and manufacturing. Four spaces that are proposed will require backing out onto Deerfield Road. I think we met informally with you and talked about this proposal. It may have been back in December now, it's been a while.
I think it was December.
It was December.
Building coverage is proposed to be 29.1 percent, where the maximum is, allowed is 40 percent. Site coverage of 62.8 percent is proposed, where a maximum of 70 percent is allowed. Green space of 37.2 percent is proposed, where a minimum of 30 percent is required. So, we meet, we're, we meet all of those requirements. We're requesting four waivers from the parking requirements to allow the four spaces to back out onto Deerfield Road. We feel that the usage of Deerfield Road is, is fairly light, and the visibility is, is good. To allow two driveways, the main driveway curb cut and opening, and the opening for the four spaces to be, to allow the two driveway openings, sorry. To allow the driveway opening in excess of 50 feet. The main driveway opening is 93 feet wide to provide for easy truck maneuvering on and in and out of the site. And to allow parking spaces to be less than the required 15 feet, foot setback from the street lot line. And because this is an industrial zone, an encroachment into the setback area is not creating a nuisance to other properties along the road. It's, it's fairly, again, it's not a busy road, and, and not too many buildings, and not too many lots, actually, on the road. And we did look at Charlene's staff report, and, and that addresses the lack of a loading area for building greater than 5,000 square feet. We're not anticipating a use that will require a loading area, and we're requesting a waiver of the Section 325-40. A dumpster's not proposed for the site, and refuse will be stored inside the building. And we will actually request a waiver of that also, we just don't see the need for a dumpster for the use that we're proposing for the building. Parking space is shown in front of bay doors, we do not know what, what the use is, except for light industry, and we just don't think that the use will be that intense that parking in front of the bays will be a problem. Any use light, other than light industry and manufacturing, will require review by the board, we understand we'd be back before you if that changed. And we agree that this is an oddly shaped lot, if you've read Charlene's report.
I'm not going to have to review it, she's doing it. Great job for me.
It's an oddly shaped lot, but we feel that the proposed building and parking make, make the best use of the site, especially when compared to other developed lots on Deerfield Road and in this surrounding industrial area. And I did mean, I think we, with the crowd, I forgot to hand out, just so you can take a look, I've superimposed the site on an aerial, so you can kind of compare it to other buildings in the area. I'm sorry I didn't hand that out to begin with. And as far as the building setback, and this is why we're, we're going to the Board of Appeals, the 1989 definitive subdivision plan, the setbacks were drawn in, we were using those when we developed the site plan for the site, is 25 and 25. We didn't see that there was a, or we didn't feel that there was a, a rear setback. And so, we're, we designed the building to meet the 25-foot setbacks, and, and that's where we disagree. We met with Ray-
Yep.
And Charlene, discussed it, and we'll go to the Board of Appeals, discuss it with them. But if you just take a quick look at the aerial, I'll, I'll wrap it up, because I know you've had a long night already. As I said, I've superimposed the site plan on the aerial, and just so you can see what it would look like when developed. And so, that's, that's the end of my presentation.
So, Charlene, what say you?
She's a toughie.
Hey, I've been doing this a long time.
She's, she's good.
I had some good teachers, Bill. So, Susan did speak to several of the items, but I'll go through them again. And we did meet with Ray Chesley, the building commissioner, regarding the setback issue. Staff strongly believes that the property line, which is kind of northeast-ish, but north, is a rear lot line based on the definition of lot and the definition of yard setback rear, I think is the formal, so that, you know, the, the area to the-
The rear setback, right.
To the top of the plan is, is a rear setback, which would require 50 feet. So, we did, we met, we agreed to disagree. The driveway and curb cut, in my opinion, far exceed what is allowable under Section When this was before the board, as an informal review, I raised that same concern regarding the width of that curb cut. Just to reiterate, Section 325-42H does state in part, and any entrance or exit driveway for single or two-family, there's a word missing there, but shall not exceed 24 feet in width at the intersection. Should a driveway from, oh, here we go, commercial industrial use require width in excess of 50 feet, justification for this increase in width shall be provided by the applicant to the planning board for review, approval, or denial as part of the site plan review process. Until you know what the use is going to be at the site, how do you know that you're going to need that wide? 90-plus feet is really a large, huge area of asphalt. How do you know you're going to need that wide an entrance? The fourth parking spaces, which back directly onto Deerfield Road, I, I really have some angst about that. I have seen people cut through Deerfield Road to avoid the intersection of Depot and Queen Anne, or Great Western Road, right there. There is a curve right there, I'm just very concerned about the site distance and, and people backing out onto that road. It may not be very busy now, but as things develop, I think it's just going to get worse. I do not have a problem, in all honesty, with reducing the setback to 15 feet. You know, you would need to expressly authorize that, this is a very odd-shaped lot. I think it is very limited because of the setback requirements, the extent of the roadway, I mean, there is so much road frontage for this particular piece of property. Again, we discussed the, the need, in, in staff's opinion, that it needs a 50-foot setback. They will need a waiver for the loading requirement, that has not been requested. But again, until you know what the use is, you don't know if you're going to need that loading space. I have no problem with not having an exterior dumpster. I wish more properties actually did take care of their, their refuge and trash internally. In some cases, I think dumpster, dumpsters are actually a nuisance. People are using them for their-
Personal.
Personal trash, which is not a good thing. Again, the parking calculations are based solely on light industry or manufacturing and three employees, so essentially, only six spaces are required. You know, they haven't indicated why they need the five additional spaces, and also, if there's a company-owned vehicle that's going to be used in association, that needs to have a parking space. You know, without knowing what exactly is going to be there, having it as a light industry and manufacturing use will limit this, the use of this building. A landscaper cannot go there. An auto repair facility can- An auto repair facility cannot go there, based on the parking for the use that they're proposing. Again, there is no question that this is definitely an odd-shaped lot. You know, the, the need for relief to allow for parking closer to the road, front setback in the side driving for truck maneuverability, is a testament to this. And I do say, perhaps, it's just trying to put too much building and parking on, on this lot. As my last recommendation is that the board not act quickly on this application, but take the time to consider the request closely before making a decision. One of, and I raise this concern with these folks, at, when we did meet regarding the building setback. One of my concerns about continuing a public hearing, waiting on another board to review. We, this board does not know when it needs to continue this hearing, too. I, I personally don't think it's, it's fair to the, to the butters, not that I think there are very many here for this particular, but there may be. I think a cleaner way to do this would be to, you know, have them withdraw without prejudice. I would have absolutely no problem with the board waiving the filing fee, because it was not an inexpensive filing fee for this. You know, provided it comes back within a year. You know, if for some reason it comes back smaller than what they've proposed, they won't get a refund, because we don't have that ability. But, you know, I'm just, I'm just concerned that I don't want this to get continued, continued, continued without a resolution with the zoning board of appeals. I don't know when they can, you know, they need to file for a building permit application to get a denial before they can even go to the zoning board of appeals. So, I just, it's, it's a time thing. And, you know, again, I would have absolutely no problem if this board, you know, wanted to waive the fee. I don't, I, I certainly do not have an issue with that, if, if the applicants did want to withdraw. If they want to get some input from you, whether, you know, you have any angst or concern about the fifty-foot versus twenty-five-foot setback, I think it's appropriate to get that input from you now, if you're willing to do that, but, so, I'll be quiet now.
Thank you, Charlene, very much. Okay, so, any comments from the board?
I'll comment, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. I really have the same comments that I had back in December. I do think the road is, gets a lot more use than anybody realizes. It's a cut-through for, to avoid that, that Depot Road double intersection. And I still have great objection to the four parking spaces, because knowing what's coming in and out of there, it's heavy commercial vehicles and it's, and it's, you know, the, the random person making the cut-through. So, to me, I, I just don't like the idea of parking spaces backing out onto the roadway, because I just think people aren't gonna pay attention, and it's gonna be a, a heavy, a piece of heavy equipment that's not gonna be able to stop quickly. And heavy equipment versus a, you know, a compact car just isn't what you'd like to see. You know, I, I guess the, the second part is, is really, I guess I have to agree with Charlene, there's a, there's a lot there. I guess I would wanna know what the use is, you know, before parking spaces were approved in front of a bay, too. Just not knowing what it is.
Mr. Chair, can I make some comments as to Charlene's comments?
Sure. First of all, the, the anticipated use of the building is storage. I've built a couple of similar buildings, and what we're finding, there is a great lack of boat marine storage. And this is what we think is gonna happen, is there's gonna be very little requirement for parking. Regarding the site distance, I've been here many times, I own the property, and there is, you really can see from one end of the subdivision to the other. So, there's easily more than four hundred feet, which is a standard in the industry of site distance. I've been there many times, I will agree that some people use this as a shortcut, but this road, at least at this point, is not heavily traveled. At least, I've never noticed it and seen it to be heavily, heavily traveled. Regarding the, the size of the building, the size of the building is fifty-eight hundred square feet, it's on a twenty thousand square foot lot. The size of the building is under your building and site coverage allowances is not over. And our green space is significantly over what your minimum requirement is. And then I'd like to pass this plan around, regarding this issue of setbacks, which I'm, I'm totally confused on. This is a subdivision plan that was signed by the Howard's Planning Board in, on May ninth of nineteen eighty-nine. And on the planning board, done by the engineer surveyor at the time, is this lot, and it's depicted in the pink. And on that plan, the planning board signed, the setbacks on these lots were drawn in. So, why they're being thought about and contested now, I have no idea. But, but the, there's a sideline setback here, there's a sideline setback here, and it's not the fifty feet. So, you really ought to look at this. And this is a plan that was approved in nineteen eighty-nine. Why it's being contested now, I have no idea.
Any other comments, Joe?
The plan I'm looking at, I think, shows eight or nine parking spaces.
Correct.
What's this about? I understand the issue about the four parking spaces that back out onto the road. But, in fact, you're, you're proposing how many parking spaces?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Yeah.
They're there.
I mean, we can, we can do without the four that back out onto the road. We would, thought we'd come in and ask for them, the decision is to allow those, we're fine with that.
So, we, you and I agree, there's eleven parking spaces here. Okay.
There are.
Some of them may be in the way occasionally, but they're there.
Greg?
Thank you. The, I share the concern that Mary brought up about the parking spaces in front of, I assume, the bay doors. Correct, a couple of the structures. You said you could get rid of the, the four that back out onto Deerfield Road, and I share that concern, so I'm glad to hear that. If six are required, is there another way short of putting parking spaces in front of the bay doors? Excluding the four backing out of...
We cannot find a way, Craig. And again, you know, we, we see the use of this building is boat storage.
So, I guess, having said that, I would wonder why there are, is it three proposed in the middle building in front of the bay doors?
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, three parking spaces. I see three on the left that kind of toe into Depot. But then, it looks like there are one, two, three in front of the middle building.
Yeah, what we're trying to do is to give options to the folks that are gonna be here renting the spaces when they come to work on their boats in the off-season. As to when they come, and maybe they can park in somebody else's space that happens to be in front when they're not there, that kind of thing. We're just trying to create some optional places for people to park.
I mean, if I could just address that just for a moment. Because of, we consider to be clear visibility, you know, site distance on the road. We don't think that the four spaces backing out onto Deerfield constitute a serious traffic issue. From our observations, a little candidly, I've been spending a lot of time parking there, looking at it, but I drive by it a lot. Never actually seen a vehicle on Deerfield Road. So, I think that the, I share, so Charlene's concern, it's a general issue. You know, in terms of this particular property, it's hard to imagine that this is a serious safety concern if somebody wants to back out of one of those spaces. Because the, the, the person backing out would have a clear view, candidly, for the entire length of Deerfield, so that the, the, like anyone backing out of the street, I mean, you would look around and see whether or not it was safe to back out. So, we really don't think that, that there's a safety issue on this particular road because of the full visibility, so we'd like to address that issue. I understand Mary's concerns, but I'm just saying...
And I would say one other thing, there's a new building between you and, between your property and Cludier Tile Supply. So, I mean, that building is only, was only constructed and has only been in operation probably for part of this past year. So, I don't know that you even know what the traffic is gonna look like with people coming in and out of that driveway that's right next to those parking spaces. And, and I'd like to think everybody's responsible, but we all know they're not. And, you know, and, and like I said, I, I know directly across the street, there's heavy equipment coming in and out of there. And pickup trucks and, and dump trucks and, you know, whether it's frequent or, you know, occasional throughout the day, you're also, I'm sure Cludier's is taking deliveries and they're, and they're coming in and out. So, I just, I don't think it's as, I don't think it's as light as people think it is, but, and I'm just concerned with the backing out onto the street.
And I, and I agree, the only thing I would say in response to that is that the, the building immediately adjacent to ours, if you look on the plan, is, if I get my direction correct, it's further northwest.
Yep.
So, that it doesn't appear to me that, that there's a view impediment. So, I, I acknowledge the concern, I think it's, I understand the legitimacy of it. And under different circumstances, you know, I'd be hard put to argue against it. But the, under the circumstances, what we actually have right there, I just think that the concern is a little overstated. And that the, in reality, you know, the, you know, people can, will be able to back out onto the street without risk either to them or to people coming by. So, but I, you know, that's, I understand we have a difference of agreement, and that, and so the whole point of this is, let's talk about what the concerns are.
Okay, Charlene?
It, something that the other Bill, Bill Marsh, said, is that he intends this to be boat storage. That's not light, that's not light industry manufacturing. Those are two very different uses, and they're two different uses in the use table, and have very different parking requirements. So, if the intent is for boat storage, then it should reflect that this is gonna be used for boat storage, not for light industry manufacturing. So, I, it's, you know, if, if it is gonna be used for that, then it should reflect that, and that may change the need for the number of parking spaces that you need.
We don't know use, I mean, we're, we're intending for it to be storage. And, and the buildings we have built, that have had boat storage in them, I mean, there is nobody there, rarely.
And that's my point, is that we did, this board did approve a boat storage on Route twenty-eight. And it was determined that they needed like two parking spaces.
Well, I mean, the reality is, pardon, just before you go, Craig, I apologize.
Well, it's up to the chairman. It's up to the chairman, not you.
I have a tough time with lawyers, anyway. But that's okay, go ahead.
Lawyers are such jerks, all they wanna think about is themselves.
That's right.
So, I apologize.
First thing we do, we shoot all the lawyers.
That's what Shakespeare said, the first, kill all the lawyers. But anyway, Bill really has no clue what he's gonna have for tenants. You know, he believes his demand for boat storage and boat, you know, you know, people wanna work on boats. But he really doesn't know, and that's why we filed the way we did. And so, so, but I think the reality is that, you know, we're not building a McDonald's here.
Or a dollar retail.
Well, you know, we might be available for that.
Retail needs to use special permit in the industrial.
I mean, I know I'm not supposed to joke, but I only have a month left, I'm gonna have some fun with this.
I just had one quick comment, because I don't think, Mr. Riley, you were here at the, in December.
Thank God.
And one, and one comment I had made at the time was, I'd be more inclined to, and I had asked if it was possible, could, instead of having parking spaces back out, could you, could, would we have the authority to allow a couple of stacked, two stacked rows? So, maybe you could still get four spaces in, just have them stacked inside and not backing out onto the roadway? So, that was, you know, not, not objecting to the volume, just, like I said, that was my comment from December, and I just wanted to point that out again, that's all.
Do you mean on the main part of the parking area?
On the, where the four are.
Where the four are, okay.
Instead of the four backing out.
Yeah.
Maybe there's enough room to stack four, two by two.
Look this way.
This way, so that if you had...
Through the sideways, it's in us.
Exactly, so that, you know, if, if you had all-day employees there, they can park out of the way and...
And the board has allowed that for different uses.
I think that was my question in December, and that was just my comment, I just wanted to bring it forward again.
Yeah, I, I just have, I'm troubled by the backing out. And, and I'm also troubled by the parking spaces in front of the bay doors. Depending on the use, people may want to use those bay doors, so it turns out that, that they're encouraged not to park there, but park in the back-in spaces, or the back-out spaces, because that interrupts the business, the real purpose of why this building's here in the first place. So, you know, obviously, you're hampered by the lot size and the shape and the setbacks. Is it possible to grant a waiver on, on the setback, the fifty-foot setback?
No, sir, that requires variance.
And so, that was one of the, I don't want to interrupt Mr. Chadwick, you know, because he's got his hands on this.
He's really been patient, you know.
Yeah, way more patient than I've been, so...
It's a ploy to forget my question.
So, before you forget your question, I mean, one of the things we ought to talk about is, we have to go to the zoning board. We're gonna need a recommendation from you, as a board. And, and the, we think that the lot shape here justifies a request for a variance. And so, we're gonna ask for a recommendation from you to the zoning board, what you think about how the lot shape affects the setback issue. And so, and, and Bill passed around this plan that showed, you know, a twenty-five-foot setback from Depot, which we, we think of as the front of the property. Charlene and Ray think that Deerfield Road is the front of the property, and the, the adjacent lot is the back of the property, and we saw it had to be setback from the back of the property, which, candidly, from a, 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 well, sort of a zoning land use point of view, makes no sense, because that's just another commercial use. And, and presumably, the fifty-foot setback was to protect the rear property, wherever that was. So, so we would like to discuss that with you as well, so I just wanted to get that issue out there before you finish.
Craig?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Bill, I think if I understood you correctly earlier tonight, when we were talking about the four, and it's, I think, pretty obvious that everybody's concerned about the four parking spaces showing backing out. I thought you said you could get rid of that, and it wouldn't really impact what you're doing. If I understood that correctly, then, with all due respect to everyone, why are we continuing to have this discussion? If your solution solves our concerns on that specific thing, why don't we say, yeah, you're not gonna do it, and we'll be happy and we'll move on from there?
Well, the board can choose to do that, I'll live with that, but I did like Mary's suggestion of stacking two and two for four.
Which would again negate backing out onto the Deerfield.
It would remediate the issue.
Yeah.
Mary, how do you stack?
If I might, there's also the issue of the ninety-plus feet opening, which I just, I contend is huge.
Why, why do you think that's bad?
The bylaw allows for a fifty-foot opening, Joe, that's almost twice the size.
I understand that, that isn't my question. My question is...
It's a lot of asphalt, it's just, I, I, I just...
I don't see why, why that's bad, the more is better, to me, frankly.
Paradise him.
Them guys will love asphalt, Joe.
Well, I'm not paying for it.
Is it, what's an industrial zone?
I know, I mean, I...
But there are, I mean, they need to substantiate to this board the need for that. I don't believe in... I don't believe that, that that has happened. But I'm not the decision maker here, you guys are. But you can't make a decision now because of the setback issue anyway, so how you wanna deal with that, I think, is what is before you at this point.
Well, I mean, you know, we're here, we're here looking for recommendations and support, hopefully. We'd like you to support our application to the zoning board that, you know, the 50-foot setback is, is not, not the property to the north. And the, the, you know, I mean, if you want us to, you know, I mentioned this to Charlene in one of our early conversations, we could put an island in the middle of this 90-foot opening. It would reduce the opening, you know, if, if that's the kind of thing that would alleviate some of the concerns. I mean, we, you know, we probably still want something larger than is allowed, so we'd still ask for a waiver, but we could put an island there, as we did on the, on the adjoining property.
Yeah. So, you know, you're, you're, you're getting to the point of what would have been my question, Mr. Riley, is, you know, why do, why do we need that to be 90 feet as opposed to 50? I mean, why, why so wide?
Just allow for more maneuverability, Jim.
Yeah, it's just...
Another thought we've had is doing an island out of Grass Creek or something.
Yeah.
That you'd mow when you, when you, when you landscape and mow the, the other parts of the, of the green space.
Yeah, so, so the simple answer is, we could put an island in the middle.
Yep.
Does that, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
Does that not defeat the need that you've expressed for the 90 feet now to maneuver boats with trailers and so on?
We just thought it'd be easier, that's all. Yeah, I mean, if, if Grass Creek answered the question, something that on the occasion where you needed it, you can drive right over it with tractor trailer.
Yeah, I was thinking, I mean, if you could, if it's 90 feet as shown on the plan and the island is, pick a number 20, so you've got...
70.
70. Could you make one of 70 rather than two of 35 with the island in the middle? So, again, it's reducing the mass of pavement.
I think we'd have to study that.
Okay.
For maneuverability and so forth.
I think the answer's probably yes, though. The, particularly if there's no objection to using a substance like, you know, Grass Creek. Are you familiar with that?
No.
Okay, so Grass Creek is, basically, they put blocks with holes in them, and so the grass grows through it. So that, as it matures, it looks like a lawn.
But it can substantiate vehicles.
It can, thanks to the...
Yeah, that's a pretty, pretty good idea. Joe?
I just, you know, one of the things I do in the morning is drive around and look at the harbors. And the day before yesterday, I was over at Allen Harbor, and God love the Our Company, but they had one of the big trailers, boat trailers, and somehow, because that ramp at Allen Harbor is so gosh darn narrow, they dumped it off the end. They eventually had to have one of their trucks with the big...
Crane lift?
Crane on it, lift it up and, and pull it out. So, that's, that's why when I, that was going through my mind, when, when I'm looking at the, the width of what you're, and what you're doing here is, you hope that you're gonna rent it to Johnny Jones, who's gonna back his boat trailer in there and put his boat in one of these garages. Isn't that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Yeah, and that's why I, I thought, that's why I said much more is better, in that the more room they have to be able to get in and out of there with, with the vehicle that size. That's the way I saw it. I mean, I wouldn't vote against it if, if the board felt that it should be narrower, but I don't see anything wrong with its current width. That's what I'm trying to say.
But the use that they're going for is light industry and manufacturing.
Yeah, I understand.
So...
That doesn't preclude them from renting it out to somebody to store their boat, does it?
We don't think so.
Kinda sort of.
I don't think so.
We also, we've also found is that there are a lot of small companies who wanna rent these spaces for boat maintenance. You know, you think of Richardson Marine, Diesel Smith, which is in Dennis, you know, they're all moving boats around all the time.
Yeah. You have a boat, you have a company that does that right across the street from you.
Correct.
In fact, he's got a bunch of his boats.
Yeah, he sure does.
Stowed up.
Which he's not supposed to.
We love Carl, but...
Yeah, but he, and he's been there a long time.
He has been.
So, what, what would we have to do, Charlene, to, to make this acceptable?
Well, they, in the building commissioner, who's the zoning enforcement officer's opinion, it needs to meet 50-foot setback. So, it would need to go to the zoning board of appeals. They can either appeal his decision, which hasn't been made yet, 'cause they need to make application, or they can go for a variance.
Need to form.
Down the hallway.
They need to be denied.
No, we, we filed the building permit application...
Did you?
A week ago.
Oh, all right. Well, it could take 30 days.
I've been, I've been bugging Ray, yeah.
We need, we need Ray to say you can't do it, so we can file the application.
Okay. But it needs to go to the zoning board of appeals for relief.
They have to be denied or come to your board.
You know, assuming it happens in the next couple of weeks, they're not looking until July for a meeting. So, I mean, it's...
And that's on, that's on the fast track, by the way.
And that's on the fast track. They're probably looking more like at August. I'm just concerned with continuing a public hearing for something like this, particularly where we're losing a board member. And we have two other, I think, two other board members who are up for reappointment, and if they're not seeking reappointment, then they'd have to reapply anyway. So, I mean, it's, you know, either continue the hearing or offer them the option to withdraw without prejudice and waive the filing fee, so that once they have gone to the zoning board of appeals, maybe they have a better idea of what they actually wanna have at the location. But just, the, those, to me, are your options.
Well, I think, I think there's a third option, and that would be your recommendations to the zoning board regarding...
Well, that's part of the, both options, in my opinion.
Yeah, so, I know, but, I mean, we're talking about this group providing a recommendation to the zoning board regarding parking spaces backing out, the 50-foot setback, you know, the width of the way of the driveway.
That doesn't need a variance. That can be waived by the planning. The only variance that I see that you need is the building setback.
Right, and so, and so, so, so it's, so the idea would be to get your recommendations tonight or soon, so that as we proceed to the zoning board, we, you know, when we go to the zoning board, we can say, well, the planning board says whatever you say. And so, and that's why, you know, Charlene didn't want us to come tonight initially. And I said, well, we'd like to, we'd like to get the opinions of the planning board for our, for our zoning board application, and that's, so that's why we're here.
I'm, you know, Mr. Riley, it's, it's really, we're, we're in a tough position if you're asking us to do something, kind of going against what the recommendation of the town planner is.
Well, we'd never request that.
I, I...
I, I just give you guys options in my opinion. You can do what you want.
I just wanted to make that clear for the record, right? I mean, we're, we're...
Well, I'm not even putting that in here, so...
Oh, you're on your own then. Just kidding. No, I, we, you know, but I, I, look, I, I think with the exception of the, of the, what, the setback, is there any, I don't know if anybody has any objections, really.
I have, I have an objection about the four backing out onto...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but that's...
I think, I think we're all in agreement on that.
We don't, we don't want, you know, we like the stacked idea.
I think that's pretty good, so...
If I might, no one has actually asked the planner for their opinion on whether or not a variance is in order or should be granted.
What's the plan? Could we ask that through you, Mr. Chair?
You can, yes, please.
I think this is actually probably one of the few cases where shape factor lends itself to the granting of a variance.
Thank you.
But we can't do that. I can't do that, you can't do that.
But what can we do?
You can pretty much say what I just did to the zoning board of appeals, once they make application.
Yeah.
If, if you wanted to.
Mr. Rick.
Mr. Riley, you seem to think that there should be a series of recommendations from this board. I think that's what you said. Well, why don't you draft it and submit it to us? We'll buy it or not buy it after you, after you do that.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Marsh, that's probably gonna cost you some money, but, I mean, that, that's the way I, I would ask you to do it. Draft what you're looking for, submit it to us, we'll look at it as a board and...
But, if I may, I think that's what... You'd have to continue this to a date and time certain to take that up before they go to the ZBA, and I, I, I'm not...
Whatever.
No, I'm just...
Trying to...
Well, I was trying to expedite it by...
I am too, yeah.
Well...
And all I would say is, all I would suggest is, continue to your next meeting. I'll submit it in a couple of days. The only reason we haven't filed with the zoning board is we, we need something back from, from Mr. Chesley, so we can file with the zoning board. But we intend to do it as soon as we get something from Mr. Chesley.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll submit a recommendation. Principally, it'll be on the setback, now that we know how you folks feel about the other issues.
Can you get me that by Monday?
Yes.
Move to continue the matter to June 11th, Mr. Chairman.
Um, this is a public, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing.
Oh, we didn't ask anybody. I'm sorry.
Are there any more?
I admire your tenacity to get this going.
You know, I'm, I'm, I really like what Joe's doing, so... Any more questions from the board? At this point, any, anybody in the audience like to make a comment about this? Is a public hearing, anybody?
I see a lot of people chuckling, so I don't know if it's good or bad.
Guys are smiling. It's good, it's a good thing. Last week, the last meeting we had, there weren't too many smiling faces.
There weren't smiling.
No.
So, I think we're good for...
June 11th.
Yeah, let's make, let's get the motion.
Move to continue Deerfield Lomond Trust PB 2019-15 to June 11th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks, folks.
We really appreciate your time.
And, Mr. Riley, you know I was just kidding you, right? You took it on the chin from James Joyce.
Another Irish.
Mine's next week.
Happy birthday.
Fellow Gemini.
Thank you, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I need like two minutes to run across the hall.
Okay, let's, let's take a, we'll take a five-minute break, please.
Wish we could get a lot done.
Now you're killing me.
Now you're killing me.
In the northeast portion of the site be eliminated to allow for vehicles using the noted exit vehicular lane on the east side of the building, enough clearance to be able to circulate. We also heard from, I believe, hold on a second. We did get a couple things in late. I just want to make sure I get them all. Building Department had no concerns, except that, of course, a building permit would be required and it would require change of use. The building code, I think, so. And then the fire department indicated no concern, great idea. My comments, the request before the board and the planner's opinion is reasonable. Ariel has been provided to show the site, which clearly shows the existing vegetation buffering this property from the abutting properties. This is currently vacant building. So, new use is always welcome when we have vacant. The recommendation made by the engineer can easily be addressed with either, you know, through discussions with the applicant at the meeting or as conditions. With regard to the comments received from Megan Eldridge, the town health director, that really does fall under the purview of the Board of Health. They would be instituting conditions themselves as a part of that. So, any conditions related to the number of washings and that kind of thing would be strictly by the Board of Health.
Yep. Any comments or questions from the board? Joe?
What was this before?
Outer Cape.
Outer Cape.
Outer Cape Healthcare.
Oh, thank you.
Anything else? Any comments from the audience? Ma'am, why don't you go first and then you go second.
You do, you need to go to the microphone.
My name is Eileen David and I live at 267 Chatham Road. And I abut the dog groomers. I am against it. There's several things I'm against. I have lived there over forty years, almost fifty years, and the traffic is very heavy there with people coming in both directions and trying to get out from the parking lot. It is extremely heavy. I object again because dogs, when they're released from the home after they've had their bath, they have to relieve themselves. I have a lot of greenery around my house and my backyard looks right into that. And I don't know the hours that they'll be working there. And I have no idea if she's going to be sheltering the dogs also. So, I am against it.
All great concerns. As far as the dogs relieving themselves, we have a designated potty area, as we call it, at my current shop. And we plan to do the same thing at this location. So, basically, we have a container for waste. We have the little baggie holders. And they would be expected to do the same thing at this property. So, I would, I wouldn't see any reason for them to go anywhere near your property. And I'm sorry, the...
Traffic.
Traffic. I can't imagine that it would be any more than the medical office. We generally see our clients come in groups. They're usually about two or three at a time. They come and drop off their dogs and then leave. And then they come three to four hours later to pick them up. So, they would be coming and going, but I can't imagine it'd be more than a medical office would see. Our hours are about eight o'clock in the morning most days to five P.M. We do not shelter any dogs. They're only there for the hours that they're groomed.
I'm still against it.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Next.
She was very thorough. She asked one of my questions. Be happy to know, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. If there are no more questions, do we...
Move to close?
We move to close.
Move to close the public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
Whatever it is. I move to close it.
Do I hear a second?
You don't need one.
Okay.
So, just discussion closed.
Discussion closed.
Discussion closed.
Thank you very much. I mean, there's not a... I think we've got to settle this issue, Ms. Mulaney, with the health director and get the answers from the D.E.P. And then I think you'd want to come back and talk to us once we have that, right?
I'd say that I don't think we need it.
Yeah.
Because the Board of Health...
We're all good.
The Board of Health will deal with that themselves when it comes back.
Okay. So, sir?
I just want to address the engineer's comments with regards to the parking. If you look at my narrative on the second page, I have some site photos.
Yep.
And this is the evergreen the engineer is referring to. We have six spaces in the front adjacent to that. And then there's two spaces behind the tree. We would, we have no problem in eliminating those and simply put up a little no parking sign.
Yep.
I've seen that parking lot when Outer Cape was there.
Mm-hmm.
And the dirt driveway that is the shoulder of the driveway on... There was cars everywhere out here.
Yeah.
So, I disagree with my client. I think her traffic is probably going to be dramatically less than what the Outer Cape Health Office is.
Yeah, I would tend to agree because, you know, you're going to be limited by an outflow.
Yes.
You can only have a certain number of washes during your open time from eight until five. So, I think you're probably right. Ma'am, would you go back up, please?
I apologize. Where do I stand in this situation, please?
I, you know, honestly, I'm not sure that there's... I mean, I hear your disagreement. I think everybody has a right to disagree. I'm not sure that, that... I think I would work, try to work with these folks and come to a reasonable solution. I don't, I don't know that we have the, unless I'm wrong, Charlene, do we have the power to do much other than...
Approve it.
Approve it.
I think you...
Or not approve it.
I think you touched on it that, you know, a conversation between yourself and Angie would be in order.
Yep.
That if there are concerns, you know, I'm sure that Angie wants to be a good neighbor, just like we all want to be good neighbors.
Absolutely. Yeah, if there's anything that I can do to make it an easy transition for you, I'm certainly happy to work with you.
I'm still against it.
I'm sorry. I've lived here fifty years and...
But you, ma'am, while you're up there, can I just ask you a question? How many years was the medical building there?
Medical building? Dr. Dougherty was there when we first moved in?
You need to go to the microphone. No, yeah, this is being recorded, so nobody can hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We moved in when Dr. Dougherty was there. Do you remember him?
Yeah.
And we had no problems. We had just the traffic.
Just for my information.
Sure.
So, how many years was Dougherty there?
I don't know, sir. He was there before I was there.
And you've been there since?
Oh, yes.
What, when did you get there?
I got there in...
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine?
Sixty-nine.
Okay. So, at least since sixty-nine.
That's all I want to know.
Thank you. And I have a question for you, ma'am.
Sure.
So, when Outer Cape was there, I mean, did, you know, did you have any issues with noise or traffic?
Yes, sir, I did.
You did?
Yes, sir.
And you expressed yourself to them?
Yes, sir. And a lot of people coming out of there, smoking, throwing the cigarettes, getting out of their cars or throwing their tonk out there on the driveway are into my bushes.
Yeah.
And I'm concerned that these people, when they come out with the dogs, the dogs have to relieve themselves. Are they going to be let loose and go into my property? I don't want that.
I think, I don't think dogs are going to be allowed to be off-leash, ma'am.
I hope so.
I would certainly hope not.
I, honestly...
Yep.
I have a dog. I...
I've had dogs too, sir. So...
I keep them, I keep her on a leash too. Thank you very much. Any guidance, Charlene?
Another lady has commented.
One more?
Hi, my name is Gay Freeman.
Yes.
I've practiced medicine in Harwich for twenty years now.
Yes, ma'am.
And I own the property.
Yep.
So, if you think about what dogs do, I don't want to be careful, you know, they enjoy having a bath.
Yeah.
And so, they run out and they'll be just running, getting into the car really fast. And I don't see any reason that any dog would be let loose to poop or pee or anything on your grass because they don't, it is not in their nature. They are very compliant and they wouldn't go over. They would not, this is not just a place to rent a dog and all this stuff like that. You know, it's a very confined, you know, group of dogs and people. So, anyhow, I don't see what the issue is here, if there is one, is there?
I think the only issue that we have is we have these folks presenting their idea. We know what has to be done.
Yeah.
It's up to the Board of Health. We have a fellow resident that's been allowed to speak her piece and I think we just move on.
It's a public hearing, ma'am.
It's a public hearing.
Well, it's a public meeting.
It's all it is. A public meeting, right. So, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else? Anybody?
Move to close.
Yeah.
You don't need to close.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Do you want to vote findings of fact?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Move to, motion to adopt the following. The parcel is in a CH1 zoning district. Two, the application does not substantially change the relationship with the structure of the site and to the abutting properties and structures. Three, the existing site, which is currently vacant but did house a medical facility, is suitable for the proposed use. Four, there will be no exterior changes to the property except the new sign. Five, customs will park at the front of the building and employees will park at the back of the building.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Move to approve case PB 2019-21, Ungar Dogs Grooming, Angie Mulaney.
Do you want to do it with the conditions or without conditions, Joe?
I don't think we need the conditions.
Yeah, that's fine. Probably eliminate the two parking spaces.
If somebody else on the board thinks we do, then I'll, we'll do it that way.
I'd recommend we do it with the conditions, just for the parking space issue.
Yeah. Okay. Move to approve with conditions case PB 2019-21, Ungar Dogs Grooming, Angie Mulaney, applicant Mulaney, care of J.M. O'Reilly and Associates, Inc., for a waiver of a site plan pursuant to 325-55F of the Code of the Town of Harwich to allow a dog grooming business at the site of a former medical facility, parent Outer Cape Health, closed parent. Property is located at 269 Chatham Road, map 34, panel V 5-1, and the CH1 zoning district. The decision is based on the findings of fact stated and the fact that the proposal does not substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site, excuse me, or to abutting properties and structures, and the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval. The following conditions are imposed. One, I'm sorry, A, prior to applying to the building department for change of use, a revised plan shall be submitted showing the landscaped island with an evergreen tree. B, two or three parking spaces with, quote, parent, within the, quote, "eight spaces," unquote, note, closed parent, in the northeastern portion of the site be eliminated to allow for vehicles using the noted exit vehicle lane on the east side of the existing building enough clearance to be able to circulate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Good luck.
Wonder if I get my daughter to take Gus down there and train him while they wash him.
There you go. Yeah. So, next, next, under public meeting, we have any old business? Anyone?
I got nothing.
Craig?
I have a question and...
Would you folks go out into the hallway, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Craig.
We continued the public hearing for, I don't know what the name of the Main Street building.
Patel.
Proposed.
Patel.
Patel, thank you.
Yeah.
And I know the Harwich Center Initiative Committee.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the right terminology?
Yeah.
Okay. And heaven had a, the last meeting that I attended as a resident of Harwich Center, they chose, if I recall correctly, they chose to kind of put themselves on hiatus. And I don't know if they're going to meet with the selectmen or not. Does anybody...
I'm going to raise my hand and say that the Harwich Center Initiative really has no bearing on this application. The Historic Commission has approved this application as it is. If the planning board has changes to it, they will need to come back to the Historic District and Historical Commission to, for us to approve any changes that might be a result of the planning board. But HTHC is still the permitting authority for the Harwich Center Historic District.
Yeah.
So, they came through on a certificate of appropriateness. We probably met with them for five or six months. They withdrew because of some significant pushback from some of the neighbors. They actually went to the Center Initiative meetings, spoke to some additional people, met with neighbors, and came back with a revised plan that the Historic District was pleased with and actually approved it and sent it forward in one, in one meeting. So, they had done, done a lion's share of work as far as the Historic District is concerned from that perspective. So, I don't know that the Historic, that the Harwich Center Initiative will have any, has any real say in the permitting issue coming forward.
I would agree with you. And I didn't mean to intend that I thought that they, that they would have any yea or nay or anything. Other, what I was searching for, not in particular, but just in general, the whole idea of the initiative is to...
They're taking the summer off.
Oh.
At the last meeting, they voted to take, not reconvene until fall.
September.
I thought they were going to talk with the selectmen and get guidance.
You would need to ask the chair.
Okay. Because that was the last Historic.
The Harwich Center Initiative Committee, which was an ad hoc committee of the Board of Selectmen.
And Charlene's saying they're still together. They just took hiatus for the summer.
That was the last vote.
The reason that I'm asking and just throwing it out was I would, I would, I was hoping they would be further along, but they're not. But that they might have input, not necessarily any kind of vote or approval authority to do anything. And what put that into my mind was I think I saw on the preliminary site plan, there was seating and table.
You're starting to get into discussion about the application, which has been continued.
Well, that's, I'm just trying to explain why I'm asking about would the initiative have any input to us? Or are you saying that they already did through the Historic District?
I would say the initiative has no input because they're not the permitting authority.
And they've no standing to...
So, the HTHC is the, is the permitting authority as far as that building in the Historic District.
Okay.
So, the initiative is, is an ad hoc committee that, that will provide, was charged with providing the Board of Selectmen...
Ideas or whatever.
Thoughts on the, on the Harwich Center District.
Yes.
But that hasn't happened yet. And regardless, the Historic District and Historical Commission is the permitting authority for certificates of appropriateness within the Historic District, so...
And would that include things like, and I'm just, and again, not to get specific to that site, but the study that was done in '09 or whatever it was, whenever it was?
That, that isn't part of this board's review, HDC's review?
No, I, I know that. But I'm thinking if the approach is to go with, you know, bump outs and cutting...
No, there's nothing, but, but there's nothing, that would all have to be decided and adopted by the Board of Selectmen. And it would have to be a plan, there'd have to be a plan in place with, that requires all of that, so...
So, we wouldn't even recommend something or the Historic, or somebody would recommend, would not even...
The Historic, the Historic District recommended that they look to the, to the streetscape and bring the building forward. So, we, we took all of those actions at the Historic District.
Yeah.
And we will, I believe this package will have, has a number of waivers, and some of those are because of, maybe because of that streetscape issue and, and the size of the property and the, and the...
They are coming in under the Harwich Center overlay district, which allows for...
And that's where that stuff would be.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Junior?
Sir?
I have a question for Charlene.
Yep.
What do we do, if anything, to look into changing the zoning laws to be more up to date?
Yeah.
With what the town wants to do?
We, in the past, filed at the town meeting to amend the zoning bylaws.
So, do we...
You would, you would have to think about how you want to change the zoning.
So, do we do that?
Absolutely. We could do that, yeah.
Okay. So, we could put that on our agenda sometime.
What I have recommended to a group in West Harwich, was nothing to do with any application before this board, is that they would like to see some different zoning initiated, something similar to the Harwich Center or the Harwich Port overlay district.
We have a lot of districts in the Town of Harwich. You have East Harwich, it's got a lot of historic buildings.
I see you didn't use the East Harwich example.
West Harwich.
Well, no, because I'm, the overlay district, there is no East Harwich overlay district except for water resources.
Right.
But in the Harwich Center and the Harwich Port, there are the overlay district, which allows what I call thinking outside the zoning box. It allows you to be way more creative...
Right.
...than the underlying zoning is. We had a discussion before you were on the board where there was a previous board member who wanted to make the overlay the underlying zoning. And what was clearly pointed out by town council, and I kind of knew he was going to do this because I've been doing this a while, said, "If you make the overlay your underlying zoning, the board can no longer grant waivers."
Yeah.
Like it can with an overlay district. It would require variances from the zoning board of appeal, which would totally take away the incentive. So, that's one of the things.
Yeah.
I provided that language to different folks. They're going to take a look at that. We have Sarah Kordjev, who is the Historic Guru at the Cape Cod Commission. She's a wonderful, wonderful woman. She has offered to work with us. So, you know, I'm going to be working with them. And certainly, my recommendation to them was when you, when we kind of come up with something, bring it to this, bring it to you guys to see what you think, to see if you would sponsor such a change at town meeting. Because I think any zoning amendment that is actually sponsored by this board has a lot more teeth than if it's a petitioned article.
Yep.
So, that would be, rather than establishing a subcommittee of the planning board to work with that group, that group would do their thing and bring it to the board and the board would decide what to do.
That's one way they can do it. If, if there's one of you who would like to, you know, when I know when they're going to start meeting, which hasn't happened yet, you know, if somebody from this board would be interested in partaking, I don't think that would be a problem or an issue. You know, one, one of the ideas is also creating a Historic District in that area. That would be similar to the Harwich Center Historic District, but actually creating more guidelines. What we hear a lot of times is, well, what do, what do they want to see? And right now, the guidelines are a little vague, you know, for the Harwich Center. So, to have some, some more, you know, detailed guidelines of what Historic wants to see. We have examples from other communities that, that we can easily incorporate and change to, to, to make it what, to make it Harwich or West Harwich. So, there is some movement afoot. I will be happy to let you know how that is progressing. And...
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had, we had a woman who was on this board. I sat next to her at town meeting this time around.
Oh, yeah.
That lady was on our board, and she took as her project all the changes in the bylaws and, and brought them before town meeting and they were allowed and so forth. Unfortunately, her husband...
Passed away.
Well, he became ill.
Yeah.
And so, she had to resign from the board after, but she did that. That's, she's the one that did that for us.
Yeah.
Shame on me. I'm saying all this, I can't remember her name. But, but she was a member of this...
Late night.
Huh?
It's a late night.
Yeah. She, she was a member of this board and...
How long ago was that?
Hmm...
Five or six years ago.
Five or six years ago.
Oh.
Yep.
You don't mean Joan, do you?
Yes.
Yes.
He does mean Joan.
No.
Yep.
And she since has lost her husband, she told me.
Yep, she did.
But she was a good member of this board.
Yeah, perfect.
Yep. So, is there any other business we need to discuss this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
We're going to make the...
I think Mary had.
I was just going to report that at the last Historic Commission meeting, we discussed trying to move forward with a historic preservation plan, which hopefully could be informative and a part of the local comprehensive plan now that that...
What'd you call it, a historic?
A historic preservation plan.
Yes.
Okay.
Which hopefully is a component part of a local comprehensive plan.
Mm-hmm.
Along with the, the housing production plan and the open space and recreation plan. So, we have, had started talking about that. So, I'm just informing this board because of our kind of notion under the local comprehen, about the comprehensive plan coming forward.
Would you present bylaws?
I haven't even...
Got to that point.
Infancy, infancy.
Yes. We just talked about that we think that should be our next priority for any number of reasons, not the least of which is the, is the start of the comprehensive planning process, so...
I would think, following up on what Joe said, that that might lend itself, the local comprehensive plan and the work that goes into it, might lend itself to proposed zoning changes.
Well, I think it...
Good.
It does to some degree, but I also...
Yeah, there will be...
It's a bigger scale.
Depending upon what the vision of the town is going to be, there will be components in that for changes, not just in zone, zoning bylaws, but also general bylaws, policies, all kinds of different things.
Sure.
So, but in some cases, you know, like with West Harwich, if there's a movement afoot, start now.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you know, they, they have an eye to what they want to see, not just, we want to see something, but they, they know what they want. They just need to figure out, and I will help them as well as Sarah at the commission to groom them towards that.
Well, they got, admittedly, got stalled in their application process for seeking a National Historic Register District.
Yeah.
Because they sought CPC funds and CPC funds...
Yeah.
It was determined weren't appropriate for...
Couldn't use them.
For that application. No. And Harwich wasn't the only town that denied it, denied the use of them.